Okay, we'll begin our meeting scene with the pledge to the flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and see the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, begin with, I hope everybody's had a chance to look over their minutes and operating statements for June's meeting and July the 11th work session, and if so, we're in line for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, June 13, 2016 council meeting minutes, July 11, 2016 work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for June 2016.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Are there none? All of those in the favor, ayes?
Aye.
No, this motion's carried. Okay, on the mayor's report, this evening, we have a very special guest. Every year, they start, years ago, we did it through the Maryland Municipal League, they have a mayor's, if I were mayor contest, presented, information's presented to the elementary school, and essays are written by fourth grade students, and this year, we had about 32 or 33 essays from the Alma Wolf School that we wrote, and we read, we take the time and read all the essays, and then we have to try and decide which one that we think's the best. So this year, we picked this young lady named Avery Sullivan, and we have her here with us tonight, and we'd like for Avery to get up and introduce herself and her parents, if she would like to, and then ask her to read her essay that we thought was the best one of the 32 that we read, so. Right at the microphone, right there, please.
Hello, I'm Avery Sullivan, and I was chosen to do my, um, essay, so, um...
Do you want to introduce your parents and whoever your guests are this evening?
This is my mom, and that's my sister Lily, and that's my dad.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. So if you would like to read your essay, please.
So, um, if I were mayor, I would make sure Happy Town will live up to its name because there's smoking problems and unhealthy tendencies. As, as me the mayor, we need to solve this dilemma, and we are on a worst towns list. Oh, no! So we need to eliminate this problem. So the first thing we need to establish is ideas for programs that will make people involved in the non-smoking, like, therapy for smokers. No smoking signs in doctor's offices and drugstores. These are very important and helpful ideas to say goodbye to smoking. Next, let's talk about unhealthy habits in school. Here's some playing on devices instead of reading and not having healthy things when you buy lunch, and not having that much family bonding, like fundraisers and et cetera. So we decided to have family fun nights, cooking nights, 5Ks and Dugow noodles, and other fundraisers. Last but not least, other unhealthy habits, like fast food, being a slob, no offense, and not exercising, and other bad habits. To fix this, we should build parks, make fun free yoga's/ human classes, and decline the population of fast food places. So in conclusion, Happy Town will be in peril without me. I'll bring it out of grief. I, I will make Happy Town thrive in the way it's used to. It will be Happy Town when I'm done with it. Thank you.
Okay. If you'd like to stand up, please. And, uh, excuse me, we do have a $25 gift certificate for you.
Thank you.
And then we have a certificate of recognition, the town of Union Bridge Mayor and Town Council certificate of recognition presented to Avery Sullivan, a recognition for outstanding essay for the 2016 if I were mayor contest. The mayor and town council read all the essays entered by Alma Wolf Elementary School and chose yours to be the top essay, and it's signed to all the council and myself, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Back on our agenda, um, under some other things on the mayor's report, I just have my report on our Ocean City convention, our seminars that we had, and I'll bring that up when we get down to the other committee reports, and we'll go on to John, our attorney, for attorney's update.
Yeah, the only update I have is, I guess, what's becoming a periodic update on our tower extension. The latest report I got is that there's a survey work being done, maybe they've already been out there, I don't know if anybody's seen a survey crew out there, but, yes, okay. Dawn says yes. And so I assume that will go back to headquarters, and then they'll, that will be, that's an exhibit to the memorandum of lease. You know, as we've said before, we, I don't understand or think that there would be any changes or any surprises with that, that tower's been out there a long time. But that should free up the process again to, you know, keep moving towards wrapping it up. So, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you, John. Jared.
Okay, the basic thing I wanted to, yeah, this is correct. We finally received our release of funds for the community's Belt Block grant, we've been waiting for that for a long time. So all the environmental review is finished, and we, we are okay on that. We have all the permits now needed, we have MDE and county permit, so we can get started on the bidding. So this week, I'm going to work with Richard on getting the bid packet finished, I'll write the request for proposals, and the ad for it, and once Richard and I get everything completed, I'll bring it in here for you guys to check. If everything looks okay, we can go out to bid, and we'll send the ad out. Probably, if it, if it looks okay with you guys by next week, we could probably do it by next week. So, um, you know, we'll, it should be a quick turnaround, we'll probably get a week or two for the bids, I'll have them in here in the town office for them to come pick up. And so we have, now we have all three, we have the program open space, the National Recreational Trails, and the CDBG grant for the trail and the parking lot. So we should have, should be able to get it, get it finished like we, like we want to.
How about the equipment?
The letter's in, I finished, as you know, I think I talked about the fact that I had to make an amendment to...
Right.
Or amendment letter.
Right.
But I sent that in, and I haven't gotten any response.
I haven't heard that.
Negative response from them, so that's usually good. So we will get a letter in the mail letting us know if we get that or not.
Okay, all right.
And I, I think we can go ahead and just get started on everything, and then we can, we can kind of do that separately, I think, because that'll, the town will purchase that themselves with the grant. So the, hiring the contractor will be something separate.
But not, okay, you're saying wait for the, the okay for to get the...
Yeah, we need to wait till we get the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, but we've given them everything that we have to, so we're just waiting.
Right, okay.
Plus, we also, in the past couple of weeks, finally notified that we are a sustainable community now, and that there also makes us available from, for some other types of grants. So hopefully, once we get that packet, we can look through some of that and see what else we can maybe, you know, do to help the town.
Yeah, there's a couple of good grants, being a sustainable community, that you're eligible for now.
That was a very intense grant, and Ned did a lot of work on that, and it was very intense, so.
It's a tough one, it's a, it's a long grant, it's a long application.
Been about, two years ago, we filed for that, and so it's been a long time getting it, so.
Yeah, but yeah, I can, I'll give you a list of a few grants that I know about that you are now eligible for.
Right.
Pretty good ones, too, so.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right on, public comments and concerns.
Hi, I'm Matt Sherman for everybody, or anybody who doesn't know me, I've been in this town for, since I think, believe, 2002. Just found out on Thursday that trash is not going to be picked up on Shriner Alley. I'm not sure if that's going to affect any other streets or not, but I understand it's a larger trash truck, and since there hasn't been an issue picking it up until, until I find out Thursday that it would be, and why would a trash company buy a larger truck that's, than what they can use in this town, and I believe they should be able to service everybody and not most people? And what would be coming next, too, of, you know, maybe Stan Ball, I think that's who's clearing the snow, maybe they decide the hill's too steep to clear, and I don't want, you know, give an inch and take a mile kind of thing here? And is there then any other alternatives to this problem of property damage at the top of the hill, I guess is the reason there? If there's any other solutions to the problem being offered, as just canceling the pickup and moving it down the way over? My concern is, you know, those trash just usually gets left behind sometimes with bags, red, they don't pick that kind of stuff up, and I don't want to get stuck in with that, but having to pick up after the trash man when I have four or more of my neighbors putting their trash down the end of the street there.
I think the biggest problem is that the trash companies are getting bigger trucks so that they can do it all on one route. So you're seeing a lot of the, I mean, we use Hughes, but a lot of your companies are getting the bigger trucks because of having to run up and down the road with different, with different loads.
Yeah.
And they're trying to save money, and of course, when you look at the trucks, unless you really buy a small truck, the trucks are getting bigger every year.
Yeah.
We look at them every year, we go to the convention, and the trucks are getting larger, and it does make it difficult on some of the smaller streets.
It does, yes.
And that was, that was what they told us, you know, it's just, the newer trucks just can't make that turn without damaging the street up there and running over people's edge of their yards.
Well, I have the problem down in my yard, too, but I solved that with some fence posts.
And Ellen usually takes care of that, so.
Actually, the, the original problem was the fact that it was damaging yards before they even got the bigger truck.
Right.
So it didn't matter that they got the bigger truck, they were already having a problem with damage to property trying to get in and out of Shriner Alley.
Well, I did, also, when cars park across the street from my house there, it's virtually impossible for them to turn. We thought about maybe putting a no parking for trash morning there or something, so they can have a return.
Which way did the truck come up the street?
Uh, I've seen it go both ways, so I'm not sure.
Which way was it done? Where's the property?
The issue where the, the person was complaining was on Belleville, but if they come off of Leitner Street, that's straight up the hill. I mean, I don't know, I don't know if they can make the turn off of Leitner.
Can't make the turn with that.
Can make the turn, okay.
I haven't seen a truck either, so.
No.
But they also have the other end, I don't know why, until this point, why they don't use an access road, there's a water tower to help turn around, and it doesn't appear that you do, anyway.
Yeah, it's just, it's unfortunate situation that they ever made a street like that and have houses that close, because we've had problems even getting in and out there with our tow truck, which is a lot smaller than a trash truck, without, you know, getting into people's yards, so it's just one of those unfortunate things. Yeah, you know, I'm hoping that we don't have any other streets that it's going to happen to, but...
Yeah.
Hopefully, when they design streets and design where they're going to build houses from now on, you know, well, I do know that if we ever build this housing development, I hear there will be wide enough streets to get equipment up and down.
Mm-hmm.
But that was, that's the older part of town, and unfortunately, it was never thought of those days.
Yeah. I guess as far as trash that could be left behind or something, and like, people couldn't dump stuff that's too large that they won't take, is that something the town will look at after, see, come back and see if they make sure they pick it up?
I will give you my phone number after the meeting, if you have problems with trash left behind or...
Okay.
Mess with the trash because it's being moved down there by your property, give me a call, and I will look into it, get it resolved.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi.
My name is Kimati Jones, I'm a, been a Union Bridge resident now for a decade, and I do have a public concern, and kind of piggybacks a little bit on what this gentleman just spoke about. Um, there are two things, one, I know that I live on Eldred Street and Benin, where those two streets meet, and the curb used to be painted yellow there so that cars couldn't park directly under the light pole, and this time it's gone, the yellows kind of faded away, and cars began parking there. And I never realized how important it was to have that yellow there, because now as I'm coming out of my driveway with the cars there, I can't see any traffic that's coming from the left here. And there have been a few times where I've had to, where I've locked my car up with brakes, you know, so that a car could come past, but the thing that really got me was, my son is playing in the driveway, and he wasn't in the street, and he hadn't even gotten as high as the sidewalk yet, and a car had to lock up their tires, because they couldn't see them, because there was a car there. So I was wondering if it were all possible, if that curb could somehow be just repainted again. Also, I know that directly across the street from the curb, it's probably been about, probably been about four or five years now, one of the heavy snows, we had a plow came down, that curb was painted yellow, and I guess with the amount of snow that was there, the plow didn't know the curb was there, and when it hit the curb, it took a chunk of the curb out, about this big, solid cement, and the chunk has never been moved. I mean, it's gone a little bit from the grass, or back to the curb, grass, back to the curb, and now with the cars coming, I've had to go a little bit to the right, a little bit more to see, and I keep on hitting the chunk. So if it was all possible to have a chunk removed, or ground down, or glued back, or cemented back, or something of that nature. Also, with the curb not being painted, anytime the trash truck comes down Benin Street and tries to make it right onto Eldred, it's a four-minute process, because they can't make the turn, or a school bus. School bus can't make the turn either, so it's usually a lot of backing up and, and, you know, trying to figure out, trying to navigate that corner. Also, and I don't know this, which is why I'm asking you all, is it, is it mandatory that all trash needs to be put in some type of receptacle, or anything like that, or trash bags, is that okay? And, and the reason I ask that, because I have some surrounding houses around my home that their trash isn't in a bin. It's usually, like, right where there's, the steps are the trash, it's usually just right there, about two or three feet away from the curb, and as the week goes on, sometimes they'll put their trash out two, three, four days early, and it just bags, which is fine, until one day I notice some of the bags were torn open, and then as I go down there, there's vermin running over the bags. Didn't think too much about it until I started, began to cut my grass on the side of the street that's right there in Eldred, and as I'm coming down with the lawnmower, and I've been there 10 years, mice and other things are running out, and I've never had that issue before. So I didn't know if all trash needs to be in a bin, or if it could just be put in a bag and left there two, three, four days before the trash truck came. Those were my two issues, the curb being painted, the chunk of the curb that kind of goes with that, and the trash.
Okay, not to push everything off, but Ellen will, you can talk to Ellen about your trash.
I just hit it on while it was in.
Talk to Councilman Wilson here about your curb, because he takes care of the streets, so.
And you live across from Senate? Is that where you live?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Keeney's house. Amanda Keeney's house.
House, the Keeney's.
All right, we'll look at it, we'll look at it tomorrow, but...
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
It's funny, but is that chalk, is it, is it concrete, or is it blacktop?
It's concrete, just the actual curb, it's painted yellow on the chalk.
Okay.
As far as the, the trash receptacles go, at this time, I don't think we have an ordinance that says you have to put it in a trash receptacle, however, I don't think you're supposed to put it out days ahead of time.
Can I do encourage new residents when they come in that they need to have receptacles?
A lot of the ones around his area are rental properties.
There you go.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else, public comments? Okay, okay, moving right on, we'll go down into committee reports, and we'll start with Ellen, right on down the line.
At the convention, I came in late to the chapter briefing meeting, so you can tell more about what was discussed there. I was also there for the new officials meet and greet, and that's where existing officials who are members of the communications committee have a room reserved where during lunchtime on the Tuesday, new officials from any area can come in, and we discuss issues and help to make them feel more comfortable with being a public official. I attended the SNAP Learning Grants 101, which was identifying grants opportunities, that was taught by Happy from Fethersberg, who was, it was very informative, and there was a lot of information given on where to find grants to try to do the work that you have to do when you don't have the budget for it. And I also, following through with that, I attended the Grants 102, writing proposals, and the lady that taught that class was, gave us a lot of useful information, was also willing, along with Happy, to help us if we come up with anything that we need any help with on that, to find grants or to write grants. I attended the business meeting where we received our 2016, or is, is it 16? Yep. Little gold bar to put on our banner city, banner town, because we were a banner city, banner town again this year, which I have given to Dawn, and I don't, I don't think that's been hung back up yet.
Yeah, but it's on here.
Okay. And then, um, the last thing I did at the convention was to attend the Wings Breakfast. Wings is women in government service. They are gearing up and getting more active, they've, are getting, have elected an official from each chapter to attend their meetings, and so our first meeting is this week, and I'll bring more back to the next meeting we have as to what's going on with that. And along with that, I volunteered my time at the registration booth and in the classes.
Okay, that it?
Yes, I don't have anything with police or trash, other than what's already been mentioned.
Okay, Laura?
Well, I was coming prepared tonight to tell you that all the lights were on in town, but that is now, not the case, we have a light out, but hopefully, as soon as that one is repaired, all of our lights will be lit. The statue looks wonderful, you can see the statue at night. All the lights on Main Street are lit, the ones that had been missed a couple of times for Potomac Edison are all on and good. I reported the last meeting, how the newspaper deliver, how I approached her about running the stop sign, and I observed that she had stopped the stop sign, so at least we have one stop sign stopped at by one person. At the convention, I attended six classes, Making the Most of Elected Officials, the Police Department Relations, Strategies for Downtown Revitalization, Fraud Awareness and Prevention, Tiny Towns Discussion Forum, Public Information Act, which I had already taken, but I wanted to refresh your course to be up to date, and Creative Ways to Communicate with Residents. I have submitted my report to Dawn, my summary. I think Strategies for Downtown Revitalization was a good class, I think that's what we need in town, basically, understand your community, listen, learn, engage your community, research, study, and compile data, create an attractive walkable place, improve public places, and there are more, which I, like I said, I submitted to Dawn. But the one thing that I liked, and I know I've repeated this before for other classes, but Creative Ways to Communicate with Residents, social media is where it's at. I think we need to look into, I know we're talking about updating our website, but I think we need to look more into social media with Facebook. They did say Facebook and Twitter are fading with the population. Instagram is harder to engage in municipalities, and they said Snapchat was one that's hard for municipalities. There is one that I think I'm too old to even know what it is, called What Happ app, but that is an up-and-coming app that municipalities are using, I don't even know what that is. But they also did mention to make, if you need to do quick communication, is to make infographics, and it, they requested, or suggested, I mean, that you hire somebody to do the design layout, which is costly, but they said University of Maryland grad students will usually do that for free, because they're trying to build their portfolio, and I'm always trying to recruit Carroll County Career and Technology Center for things, so I think we can, if we ever looked into that avenue, that we could maybe recruit them as workers for us, so.
Yeah, that's for sure, Facebook and everything, that's the way to communicate. The only thing is, if, if we get somebody to do that, we need somebody that can keep it, keep it up, rather than to make the Facebook page now and let it go for a whole year, it needs to be updated on a regular basis.
I agree, yes. And that was one of the cons, they said you had to promote the update.
Have any volunteers in the community that might want to do that?
One thing with that, not to burst your bubble, but you have to monitor that.
Right, you do.
You have to have somebody that will remove comments off of it that are not...
Town, that the town does not put on there.
... vulgar.
That's right.
And so you're going to need somebody that's going to be able to be up on that.
Pretty clever, yeah.
And a lot of people I have heard in the past, people would be at home, and they would monitor at home on their phones and everything. I'm not doing that. You're going to have to get somebody that's going to, that can do that.
It is very time-consuming.
And you also have to keep information for public records, too, correct? With Facebook.
Yes. When we had our mayor's association meeting back in February, there was a few of the towns that already have gone away from Facebook because of that problem of people being able to actually put things on it without, I guess you, with certain passwords and everything, there's always, I'm not really up on that kind of stuff either, but there's always ways that people can get in there, and I guess you could say they're putting viruses in on your, what you have, and so somebody has to have the time to stay up on it, at least check it, at least, what I'm hearing, at least once a week, make updates, delete things that aren't supposed to be there, so, unless you really pay a company to do it and keep up with it, it gets very costly, so, and some of the different places have gotten college students or high students, high school students to do it for them, but then again, when you, when you have that change of their classes and everything, it's hard for them to keep up, so.
Right.
You'd like to check into that, that's a...
Okay.
You have responsibility.
All right.
Okay, Edgar?
We're working on, on trying to get that bank cleaned up, the center. We're looking into getting somebody to redo the floors in the center. It's about all I have up there. When I was in Ocean City, I took the structure of mutual government on Monday, and then went to the General Assembly, so then I decided to go through all the exhibits and get all the free goodies. So then, in the afternoon, I went to the mutual budget meeting, and then Tuesday, went to the Building Executive Committee, which that was more for language for the foreign people that we have, so everybody can get, speak the same language. Then I went to the Tiny Town Discussion Forum. So then, in the afternoon, I went to SNAP Learning Grants, Lou Ellen was there, and then Wednesday morning, before I left, I took the open meeting class. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Donald?
Okay, I went through the strategies for downtown, and that was some of the discussion with the key steps and topics, including fostering constructive public engagement, which we have vacant properties around here that we're involved with, and there was another session on your, on your brain and your body, and it gave you some points on persons that work in offices, of how you can do certain things that relieve some of your anxieties. We also... We also went to Fraud and Awareness and Prevention, I think you did too, so I don't need to go over that. We went to one that's called Traffic Common. And that was to do with the issues with crosswalks and speed. And like at 40 mile an hour, you have a 45% chance of being killed. At 30 mile an hour, you have a 20% chance. And at 10 mile an hour, you have 7% chance of getting killed. But one of the things he stressed was is crosswalks. You see the signs of crosswalks and everybody, the people that use crosswalks, they're assuming that traffic is going to stop. Well, it doesn't, they're getting flattened. So, and that has been a 15% increase since '09. And actually, I have witnessed some near misses on that. And this week, Kenny, our maintenance person, has painted the lines up here at the Far House. So, and thank you Kenny for that, took care of that. Another one was the unmanagement conflict. How it's so disruptive to your communities if you don't settle the issues, which just like the gentleman here about the curbs need to be painted so and so on and so forth. That's the reason you try to take care of problems like that. And we have did a lot of maintenance on our streets this week or last week. We spent a pile of money of blacktop and white pine came in and did an excellent job. So I'm really pleased with that. And we spent a ton of money out on North Main Street, where I was hoping we'd get some help from the county and all this heavy truck traffic. But we haven't seen them be getting any yet. So we're still working on that. And actually, Edgar had brought up an excellent point this evening about the red light up here, red and green light. And which I have witnessed that in the mornings when you're coming up West Broadway, when the sun comes up, you cannot see the light. And same way in the evening when you're coming from East Broadway, you can't see the light, whether it's red or green. And that's, so Kenny, is there something? Did you ever get involved in any of that, we used with the county about some kind of shades or extensions on their light?
I think that state anyway, state highway.
That's a state light up here, but I don't think they use those shades anymore. They used to put them on years ago, but I haven't seen those shades on lights for years.
Anyway, I'm going to check it out, see what I can come up with. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Amen.
It's hard to see.
You know it too, huh?
Yes, I do. At the Rise to the Challenge Convention this year, I took Getting Youth Involved in Public Service, which is self-explanatory, and Community Branding and Marketing, and Making the Most of Elected Official Police Department Relations. I was really impressed with the General Speaker, who was Jason Roberts, and it was entitled Build a Better Block. He took distressed properties and turned them into thriving spaces. It was eye-catching, it was pretty amazing. Strategies for Downtown Revitalization, Fraud Awareness and Prevention, and Tiny Town Discussion Forum, The Matters That Matter Most. That was probably one of my favorite classes because they spoke of things that affect us every day. Foreclosures, downtown business, farmers markets planning, planning and zoning grants, emergency preparedness, social media, kids on the streets, drug problems. And it was just an open discussion about how different towns deal with different things. And it gave some solutions and some just need work. On Tuesday afternoon at the conference, my children were allowed to enter the exhibit halls. This allows them to see how local government works. It also sparks conversations about goals and methods and how to make our town of Union Bridge what we want it to be. So we had a lot of discussions on our way home, how we want our town to be, full of businesses, clean, safe, friendly, drug-free. And we know these goals are ambitious, but we find that they're achievable. This convention is to help us to help you. So thank you for allowing us to attend that. And since our last meeting, I've had no water calls. Union Bridge is having a Drug Awareness Expo on October 6th from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the Fire Hall, which is 8 Locust Street. And it's our second annual Drug Awareness Expo. We've had two meetings to prepare. And thank you for everybody that attended, I greatly appreciate that. I've sent out emails to seek interested parties and speakers. I have sent out emails to save the date. Donations are rolling in, Amanda is doing a wonderful job with donations. And also, we will continue to have meetings to prepare for vendors and whatnot. We're doing one a month. They're normally on the second Wednesday, second Wednesday, third Wednesday.
I think it's on Thursday next month.
Yeah, it's a Thursday of next month. And I will put that out in an email. I've also attended some community meetings with Master Deputy Kalusi. Amazing involvement from this community and from him to better things youth-wise, town-wise. We have follow-up meetings scheduled to bring people together community-wide. So that is forever changing and happening.
Okay. Okay, now I'll go back and I'll give you a briefing on some things over the past month. Unfortunately, in March, when we had our county MML meeting, last year, the mayors, we decided in one of our meetings that we were going to go around every year with a new president of Carroll County Chapter. And the March meeting that I wasn't there, I think they decided that everybody was going to hold office for two years. So I was elected again in March by not being there as president of the Carroll County Chapter again. So we have a couple of new things that I've been talking to a couple of the other officers of the Carroll County Chapter that we're going to try at our next couple of meetings, going to be a surprise to people. Also, at the convention in Ocean City, which we're going to, the Board of Directors, I'm on the Maryland Board of Directors with them. And we're going to change it from convention to, we want to change the name, we have to do it for a bylaw change. It's going to be called. Conference, we're going to change it to conference. So we have to bring it up in our board meeting this fall and change that, it just sounds better. Just to let you know, Sunday afternoon, when I arrived Ocean City, also was at the Chapter Officers Briefing. That was at 2:45 in the afternoon. At 4 o'clock, we had a Board of Directors meeting. And then following that, which Donald was there and some of the others had came, Edgar was there, we had a welcome reception at 5:30 to 7:00. And then Monday morning, I was supposed to be at the Convention Center at 8:30 to do rehearsal at the flag, and I forgot to take the flag to Ocean City. So we didn't get our flag in there this year. It's the first time that I ever got to see the parade of flags instead of being in the parade. So it's kind of nice to see it for a change rather than be in the parade. Following that, went to the opening session at 10 o'clock. That was, like everybody said, that was very interesting. And we had Maryland Mayors Association, we had our luncheon from 12:00 to 1:30 and our regular business meeting and elected new officers for next year for the Maryland Mayors Association. And everybody keeps talking about the Tiny Town, it's T-I-N-Y. Usually we have a small town conference, an emergency, and we have a large town. But this year, they come up with a Tiny Town, which was a thousand people or less population and which suited a lot of people a lot better because before it was 5,000, up to 5,000, and 10,000 and up. And which, you know, we really didn't fit into that. Come to find out, there was a lot of towns in the Tiny Town this year. There's some towns in the state of Maryland that are only 58 people in a town. So they're very small. So that's something that's going to be at the conference every year from now on. Did some networking on Monday evening. And just to tell you that you get around and you get to talking to people that aren't from your town. It's the reason why it's important to get out to talk to other people. Talked to a lady from a small town called Brookville. Her name was Catherine Farquhar. She is heir to the Farquhar's that were the founders of Union Bridge. So we had a very interesting conversation. I'm getting some literature and stuff for Union Bridge to send to her. She wants to come up, and she's been here before, but she wants to come up and visit the Farquhar Cemetery that a lot of people in Union Bridge doesn't know there's one that exists. That is the founders of Union Bridge, it's right out the road here off of Good and Tent Road, Bukea John. So she was very interested in coming and see that. On Tuesday morning, we had our credentials desk open up again. And we had, the Board of Directors had their business meeting. And that's what Ellen was talking about when we had our, we picked up our little plaque. So we had the business meeting, I was in that till a little after 10:00. Attended the exhibit hall for a little while, did our Tiny Towns. And then the most interesting thing that happened on Tuesday afternoon, which Governor Hogan started last year, we have a Cabinet Secretaries Roundtable. All of his cabinet, which is 21 cabinets or 26 cabinet secretaries in the state of Maryland, are all congregated in one room. And they have tables set up and you can go and talk to each one of these cabinet secretaries, whoever you want to talk to, whether it's housing or you name it, and they're there. It's a good opportunity, it lasts about an hour and a half. Usually we run into about two hours and you can go and talk to each cabinet secretary. They are very willing to talk to us. And the governor says that's something that he hopes that he can continue. It's the first that it's ever happened was last year and this year, so hopefully that will continue. Then a couple of other different meetings that afternoon, people had talked about. And then Tuesday night, we had our dinner meeting. And that's when the new officers for the state are sworn in by the governor. Governor comes to the meeting, spends the evening with us and swears all the new officers in for the next year. On Wednesday morning, back to the Convention Center, first meeting was at 9 o'clock. And we had meetings that morning. And then like I say, by being elected to the Board of Directors, we stayed for lunch. And then our last board meeting for the Board of Directors wasn't until 2:30 on Wednesday afternoon. Until we got that meeting over, it was about 4 o'clock when I got out of Ocean City on Wednesday evening. And we came back and hopefully everybody's learned a lot. It's very interesting, there have been different times when different people have thought that you waste money when you go down there. I said that as long as I'm mayor, every council person and our clerk treasurer will give the opportunity to go to Ocean City for the conference. And there are some towns that even take their Planning Commission members there because you have Planning Commission meetings. This is very, very important for, I think, not just for the council people, but for them to be able to go down and come back and try to coordinate things in our town. And it's like this young lady says, we want to make our town better every day, every year. So this is an opportunity that we all get a chance to go down and see that happen. And hopefully one day, she'll be going down for us and somebody being a town official. Is there anything else for us this evening? Okay, our next work session will be August 8th. And our next council meeting will be August 22nd at 7:00 p.m. where you're in this room. And again, Avery, we thank you very much for your hard work. And please continue and come back and visit us anytime you'd like, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we're in line for a gentleman.
They make a motion, we adjourn?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, is any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Ayes.
Noes, motion carried, thank you very much.